General Fund Health and Debt Investment Update, and I will turn it over to the Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to Matt Boston.
Matt Boston, thank you very much. Yeah, so as part of these budget study sessions, we wanted to make an effort to kind of talk much more global, large picture. We obviously have a significant amount of finances at play with investments and debt, and really what that means. And then we're also talking about just the general fund overall health. So we're looking not only historical of all the moves that have been made, especially during the pandemic years, but subsequent to that, what we're doing right now and kind of what are some of the economic indicators of what we're looking at for 25 and 26 and what that change has been since fall and the development of the budget. So without further ado, I brought Jessica Stratten, Jake, Connor, Skylar, all here to talk to this. They're a part of the finance team. I'll let them introduce themselves, but they did a lot of this, and if we have questions, we can follow up after the fact.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't they introduce themselves before you jump in?
I am Jessica Stratten. I'm the Director of Management and Budget. And this--
Jacob Milner.
These two are staff.
Tyler Thorne.
Skylar Brown, the Grants and Contracts Financial Manager for the city.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, so we're going to dive into talking about general fund financial health. So one of the things about just a fund's financial health, they are really evaluating the fund's ability to weather change. And a fund's resiliency is directly related to the cash it has on hand. So this is why this chart shows what the general fund's restricted reserves and unrestricted reserves are, and what they've been over the last five years. So here we see that the restricted reserves have remained relatively the same over the last five years. However, the general fund's unrestricted reserves, or what we call unappropriated fund balance, has significantly decreased. The decrease in unrestricted reserve is primarily due to the timing of multi-year bargaining agreement settlements. So when union negotiations and their corresponding settlements are delayed, and a member's pay is trued up retroactively, so after the fact, unappropriated fund balance can take a hit, and this is for all funds, not just the general fund. It depends on where that member sits in the chart of accounts. So recently, that has happened twice with some significance. The Guild settlement for years 2017 through 2021, that occurred in 2021, but impacted 2020. There was a prior period adjustment. And again, in 2022, for settlements with the Guild, L29, and Local 270. So that's why that chart goes down. And then since 2022, the bargaining agreements have been basically status quo, with L29 coming to the table just this year. Okay, so this slide shows the structural imbalance as it has occurred. Again, a structural imbalance is present when expense growth is greater than revenue growth. Revenue growth was significantly impacted during and after the pandemic. However, no attempt was-- there was no attempt to use the revenue stabilization reserve. So as a result, $14 million was transferred in from other funds to keep the general fund going. Post-pandemic, revenue tried to rebound, but inflation and economic uncertainty has created this downward pressure. Moreover, other funds that the general fund has looked to for assistance are no longer able to help. Expense growth appears erratic, but that is again due to those multi-year bargaining agreement settlements. Additionally, city services have expanded a bit during this time, but the inflationary pressures are the big story that have increased the cost of providing those services.
Just, Jessica, if I may just add, so one of the things that you did mention is other funds that essentially came to the rescue to general fund in years past. Many council members know those actions that were taken. That was Criminal Justice Assistance Fund. That was EMS levy. That was ARPA. All of these different funds that have surplus in them, and essentially unallocated reserve balance and unrestricted allocated reserve balance during the time of COVID was essentially pulled in to assist the general fund, essentially exacerbating that structural gap because they were shoring up the wall with non-continuous money, and that just added to this challenge.
Yes. So this is the chart that shows the approximately $14 million that was transferred into the general fund over the last three years. They were primarily for public safety purposes. So ARPA, of course, is no longer available, right? There's no new allocations that can occur. The Public Safety Personnel Levy Fund basically lost its own battle with structural imbalance, as the cost of the personnel in that fund outpaced the levy funding that was coming in. And Criminal Justice Assistance Fund is in the process of losing its battle with imbalance, as the cost of detention services provided by the county is outpacing the sales tax received.
That's a bit of the conversation that we had just this last F and A committee, talking about the jail costs, and then remember the public safety personnel costs. We had to pull the employees out of those funds because of that outpacing.
Okay, so next, I'm going to send it on over to Jake. So he's going to dive deeper into these actuals a bit and explain how they inform our forecasting assumptions so that we can see where things are headed.
So like Jessica said, before we look into the future, we'll look at the past a little bit. So this table shows general fund revenue by some large categories. So that first line there, our tax revenue, has grown by an average of 3.2% over the last few years, which is basically in line with our historical average of 3%. Skipping a couple lines down to charges and services, that's grown at an average of 10.8%. Largely within that essentially is primarily engineering services provided to public works and our law enforcement services provided to the county and any other entities. Beneath that, we have other revenues, another item largely comprised by our interest earnings. And what we can see here is 2020, 2021, and 2022, you know, were close to the same amount, and we spiked into 2023 as the federal funds rate was increased. That rate peaked in August of 2023 and started to decline in August of 2024. So kind of see that occurring there. And then the items we just discussed a couple of different ways. Those operating transfers in growing by an average of more than 600% there in 2023, 2024, most of those being unsustainable and one-time funding. So in total, general fund revenues have increased by 5.6%. If we pull those transfers out, or transfers in/out, general fund revenues have increased by 4.1% over this time period. Looking at the expense side, the top line there are personnel expenses, salaries, and benefits, and those have increased by an average of 9.2%, so almost three times the rate at which our tax revenue is growing over the same type of time period. And our supplies and services have grown by an average of 2.7% with a slight decline in 2024, partly just because they're being edged out and pushed, squeezed by salary and benefits. Inter-fund services are largely another personnel expense line. These are services provided by non-general fund funds, such as accounting, IT, those services that are provided to the general fund departments. And then our operating transfers out, we see here again that Local 29 transferred for their 2020 to 2024 contract occurring in 2022. So a fair portion of the amount we paid to the Fire EMS fund is technically applicable to 2020 and 2021, but it's all consolidated there in 2022. So in total, general fund expenses have grown by 5.4% over this time period. So now that we've covered the recent history a little bit, we can start looking forward. So this chart shows total general fund expense in orange and total general fund revenue in blue. Just as a quick aside, if we were to look back prior to the pandemic, what we would see is that revenues outpaced expense by-- was about 3% greater than expense each year between 2016 and 2019. And I think the core to that is the fact that personnel expense was growing at the same rate, more or less, as our tax revenue. Compare that to now, what we just looked at, personnel expense growing by not over 9% and our tax revenue growing at 3%. We can't add that. So in this chart, you see 2021 through 2024, the items we just looked at, with that large transfer out being most of what's in 2022, that jumped there in expense. But looking forward, we've removed one-time transfers out from this projection, and otherwise increased at 3% each year. This is our historical average revenue growth for the general fund. So that's the assumption for revenue. And then for expense, we've projected forward personnel expense by a combination of historical colas, since we have a lot of indeterminate contracts at this point, and the three-year historical average of personnel expense growth. And then all other expenses, at their combined three-year average, 2.4%. And where this places us is with a $137 million cumulative deficit between 2025 and 2030, with over 37 million of that just being in 2030 alone. So ultimately, we have a problem. This is, I mean, expected, personnel expense grows, but yeah, certainly require some action on all of our behalf.
We've got to change the slope of one or two lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think Jake hit it. I mean, you know, when we have personnel growth plus inflationary pressures, it's not one or the other, right? Personnel for the general fund, 85% of it, when that's growing at 9%, you don't have much room to pull from that other 15%. On top of that, I mean, compounding what we're dealing with in '25, '26 is what we've seen based on Q1 results of what the economy is doing. And so generally speaking, really economists are saying that their outlook is much different than what it was in fall of 2024. Now, many economists are projecting a recession to happen in 2025 at a probability of 50% or higher. Here are just some excerpts from different economists on their Q1 reports. EY said real GDP contracted 0.3% annualized pace in Q1 of 2025, reversing that robust 2.4 expansion seen in Q4 of 2024. And then the US administration's on-off tariff policy has led to confidence crisis with businesses favoring a wait-and-see approach, which is largely what we're seeing and you're hearing from, which is just elevating economic uncertainty. And the US consumer sentiment gauges have plunged to their lowest levels since the 1980s, and that's again from EY. Then KPMG has said that, you know, consumer spending rose 1.8% in Q1, but that's less than the 4.2% annualized surge of the fourth quarter in Q4. And then spending on big-ticket items fell, despite consumers' behavior, to what has been reported to do a large surge in vehicle sales based on avoiding the tariffs for Q1. That bottom graph that you see is from the University of Michigan's Consumer Confidence Poll. They are stating that it's roughly, and sorry, it's kind of an eye test, but they are saying that it's at its lowest since July of 2022, and that was just obviously coming out of the pandemic. So they do that, they essentially measures three different metrics, but it's ultimately consumer confidence in the current, in the future, and University of Michigan tracks that on a monthly basis, and April was the slowest that it's been in some time.
Okay, so this slide, I did it at 2024, actual expenses for federal grants that we received. So we had about $55 million in federal expenses in 2024. That's not what we received for allocations, but actual expenses based on cities January to December. The ones I want to highlight are the $9.5 million for the HUD funding. The blue, housing, is housing. The green is homelessness. The $9.5, we actually gave about $11 million in allocation from these funding sources. So due to timing when we pay recipients or et cetera is what changes that. So like CSE, you see 2.8 million in expenses. We actually gave about $5 million in that award. The ones to highlight here, just within the past week, Trump has came out with his budget for 2026, is looking to remove the blue ones. So that totals about $4.2 million in allocations for the housing. That is something to be aware of. I mean, he has to still go through and get that passed, but it's something to definitely be aware of. The homeless ones, the ones in green, they're looking to consolidate all the COC, YHDP, ESG under ESG through his proposal. So what that will do, he says it's a savings of certain X amount of dollars, but we don't know what that impact would be, whereas he is looking to completely remove the blue ones.
And I think it's important to note, if that funding does go away, right, there's a trickle-down impact, obviously, to providers, but also to sales tax for the City of Spokane, and also to understand what that pressure that puts on those providers, because not only are they receiving reduced federal funding, they're also, based on consumer behavior, receiving fewer private donations, and we're hearing that more and more throughout the recent months.
So the financial health of the city obviously has many implications. One of those is how it affects bond ratings. So you can see the evolution of the city's rating over the years in the top left. It currently rates as high grade. The ratings have two main implications, one being how much the city pays to service its debt, and two, how much interest it gains from investors. For municipalities, there are a minimum of two rating agencies that determine a bond rating. Historically, the city has used Moody's and S&amp;P. So here's an example of showing specific metrics that an agency focuses on. These factors include economy, financial performance, leverage, fixed costs, and then various weightings associated with those categories. There's other parameters to consider, such as institutional framework, how well an entity manages its revenue and expenses, and then additional factors, such as strength in local resources, how well is the city's economy overall, and what are the future expectations? And economies of scale, financial disclosures, are there any one-time adjustments or anomalies to call out in the financial notes section of our financial report? And then any cost shifts to or from the state, those that are coming from the state back to the city, or from the city to the state? And then any significant changes in leverage? Has the city taken on significant amounts of debt? So those are something to consider. And then S&amp;P is another rate agency, as I mentioned. So I've kind of just provided their requirements here. So they'll have kind of more questions as we kind of go down the path of potentially getting, you know, rate updates in the future. And so with that in mind, how do the bond ratings affect the city? So moving amongst broader categories will come with financial implications, as I mentioned. Typically, those changes affect debt service payments by anywhere from 0.05% to 0.1%. And the graph here represents an estimated annual financial impact of shifting categories from high-grade to upper-medium or lower-medium grade. This is not to say that's where the city is necessarily heading. It's just to give you an idea about kind of the financial impact on an annual basis. And looking at the financial health of the city's debt, there's limitations in terms of how much the city is allowed to borrow for external debt, voted, non-voted. The city currently falls well within those limitations, with about 80% to 90% of remaining capacity in the five-year outlook. For internal debt, and this is, you know, debt that's issued from the general fund, the current policy limits internal lending up to 15% of the city's investment portfolio, and the city currently falls within that policy as well. I'll have a few more specifics on this program in the next few slides, but our current capacity is usually hovering around 4% to 5% over the last few months, or upwards of $12 million, as you can see on the slide. The five-year outlook opens up a bit, as existing loans are expected to mature, where at that time, we in Treasury will decide whether or not we refinance some of those loans or if we pay down those debts entirely. And then just a few updates to call out, just with the overall economic landscape. The federal administration has recently hinted that the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds could be going away, and that would result in higher borrowing costs for local municipalities across the country.
Can I just interrupt there? So when I went to DC, I did talk about this issue both with our senators and with Idaho senators.
And so it's still early, but Treasury will nonetheless be working with bond advisors and bond counsel if that appears to become a reality in the near future, and we'll have some financial projections to provide if that does become the case. And the city does have a few opportunities at the moment to refinance a few of its bonds. We've been working with our bond advisors, keeping a close eye on rate changes and possible savings. Right now, we don't have any savings that are here at the moment, unless we're keeping a close eye on several of those bonds, and those are in the chart on the screen.
Can I ask a naive and somewhat informed question? So would interest rate changes from the Fed trigger that we were moving into this lower-interest rate environment that might increase our opportunities for refinancing?
For sure.
So the fact that they held steady yesterday and just said, "We're in a wait-and-see mode," kind of means-- Till July. Not new opportunities yet, but--
Correct.
Okay, that's-- July is one of the-- Yeah. It's now, it used to be June, but they moved it to July, where it do create a drop?
Yeah, and that's why we threw that, I mean, these are the three bonds that we're looking to refinance right now, or at least keeping our eyes on refinancing with there being a financial opportunity if rates do lower. But to caveat that, right, as we're talking about all these financial challenges that we have, and we're saying that if you pull out of reserves, right, which is cash on hand, and Jessica mentioned this, if you pull out of your cash on hand that you have available to pay future debts, you are likely going to impact your municipal bond status. So while rates might decrease, if our rating decreases as well, there will still be no savings for us, because we'll be at a lower rating for our bonds. So we have to be cognizant of that as we're looking at not only these refinancings, but any sort of future opportunity that we're going to ask for when it comes to a bond, whatever the case may be.
And so then for the investment side of the city, kind of shifting gears a little bit here, there's an investment policy that guides all investment-related decisions, probably most importantly, calls out the three main drivers used in making decisions on behalf of the city, and those are, you know, are the investments safe? Are they liquid? Do they provide an adequate rate of return? And the policy also creates the Investment Oversight Committee, which includes our CFO, a council member, the retirement director, community member, and an investment officer. And back in 2023, the committee developed a new strategy for the city's investment portfolio, and it was decided on a ladder-in structure, which breaks down into three main buckets, and that's short-term or highly liquid, those that are maturing in less than one year, moderately liquid, mature with maturities one to three years, and then less liquid with maturities in three to seven years. And those categories are targeted to be 40/40/20, respectively. And what that does is it creates a revolving door, or another analogy I use, is a conveyor belt, where money is put to work, goes out for several years, and earns interest. Other benefits of this structure include consistency, easier monitoring, benchmark maintenance, and allowance for long-term investments. It's also highly maneuverable, so as market conditions change, we can change the structure essentially to be 50/50/0, or 20/40/40, whatever, you know, we decide in Treasury and in the committee. And so looking at that portfolio specifically here at the city, it's built upon three main categories of investments, and that's fixed income, primarily US Treasuries or government agency debt, municipal bonds, et cetera. The local government investment pool, or LGIP, which I'll discuss in the next few slides. And then our internal lending program, which will also be included in the next few slides. But for fixed income, as maturities come in, the first thing we look at in Treasury is our cash forecast. I mean, do we have enough cash on hand to reinvest? And, you know, where is the greatest need according to the strategy?
And Connor, I'm just going to interrupt real quick. I know a couple of council members and mayors got a little bit of a time crunch. So details, yes. If council members have questions after the fact, great. But let's go high level so we can get to some questions if we have--
For sure, just another minute here. Yeah. And so with that in mind, I mean, here's a snapshot of what we use to manage all the fixed income coming in. You know, for most months, we like to have some maturity flowing in as liquidity, with the exceptions of May and November, which are primarily property tax months. So this kind of shows that conveyor belt of money flowing in. So the LGIP, I'll touch on here. It's an investment vehicle offered by the Washington State Treasurer. You can think of it as a money market account for cities and counties in Washington. Other states offer this as well, but the main benefit of the fund is really as a place to park daily cash while earning an adequate rate of return. It is quite volatile. It can be. It has been in the past. I mean, the rate has been as low as 0.09%, but peaking at about 5.4% in 2024. So we use that as part of a strategy in Treasury to, you know, seek out some opportunities regarding interest rates.
And I think that that's an important topic to note, is LGIP, if you keep it in LGIP when rates are high, you lose the opportunity for the rates being locked in for a long period of time. So let's just say rates are at 5%. I keep my money in LGIP because I get it back, and I get that rate of return back the next day, versus purchasing a long-term bond that has a 5% rate to it, and I don't get that money back as steadily. And so that's why you saw that big spike in investment returns in '22, '23. It's because we had a significant amount of ARPA dollars that were sitting in LGIP, earning that overnight cash, but we don't have that same opportunity.
And then just quickly on our daily cash process. So the city holds a checking account balance of about $250,000 minimum. Anything that goes over and above that from the daily operations, we invest into the LGIP. And then when that balance drops below due to large disbursements, et cetera, we can then withdraw from the LGIP. So it's just kind of a back and forth that we use every month to kind of service our checking account. And then lastly, I'll just touch on the SIP financing or internal lending from the general fund. It's addressed in Section 85 of the city charter, but to summarize, it's really when internal loans are used to address temporary cash flow shortages in specific government funds, particularly when those funds don't have sufficient immediate resources. So think of, you know, fire engines, solid waste vehicles, even the Zamboni for the skate ribbon has an internal lend or internal loan. And the city works closely with bond counsel when preparing the specifics for those internal loans. And that really makes up the total investment portfolio.
So just next steps planning, July 10th is our next budget study session. So obviously, you have a lot to chew on, definitely a lot of economic conditions that we previewed last F and A meeting. The Budget Office, while strapped with L29 negotiations right now, is working their hardest to get a finalized their six-year projection. I'm hoping that they're going to meet with you, Kate. But we obviously need to make some pretty immediate shifts based on the dramatic shift that we've seen since Q4 of 2024. That all said, we'll get a little bit more information. But with that, does anybody have any questions on this information or next steps?
I guess just really quickly on next steps, and not to be too alarmist, but--
but it's obvious the red lights are blinking.
Your hat's right up.
And early on some of the slides, particularly with tariffs, and as we're looking at, you know, the national conversation with Canada and Mexico, lumber from Canada, drywall from Mexico, and how that is going to impact our, our housing construction as we're looking at growing our tax base and kind of the bellwethers of recession. You know, that's so key there. So I think a little bit more of a deeper dive about what that looks like for us locally.
Absolutely, yeah.
Then also diving a little bit more to some of the grant funds as well.
Yeah, yep. And every day it changes, right? That, that the information that we're getting out of DC and what, what could be pulled or what is going to be pulled or tariff status. Definitely construction, cost of construction, cost of capital is, is not only a concern from the housing market, but also from the commercial market. And so we are keeping an eye on that. There's a lot of same analysis done from KPMG, EY, all those large economists that are doing that same, same information. So we will have some more on that.
Well, and I'll just boil it down, I think, to, to what we know is the bottom line. If, if our revenue projections, even despite bumpiness, stay at the historical 3%, then our expenses have to come in line with that or we have to come up with a new, a new, a new strategy because the math, the math of that ultimately opens up another structural deficit. So that is going to be the tough conversations ahead of us.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that, I mean, even the budget that was built in '25, '26, both years did, were short of that 3%, you know, actual that we've seen or that historical actual that we've seen. Knowing that this was going to be challenging, we were cautious. But, but based on current information, things are going south quick.
I'd just like to say, Councilmember Navaratti and Councilmember Zepone has been joined us online. Did either one of you have any questions or concerns you'd like to express? Hearing none, I guess not. So thank you both. Any other questions? We look forward to hearing more information sooner than later. All right, thank you all. Thanks
Thank you.
To the accounting department.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, appreciate it.